Welcome to everybody here in the public. This is an emergency meeting of Tampa City Council. Like before, I'd like to begin, as we always do with our meetings, with a moment of silence. So let's observe a moment of silence for a few seconds, starting now, please. Okay, now we move forward to the Pledge of Allegiance. Stand if you're able to do so, wherever you are, and be ready for the pledge, which I will begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Madam Clerk, if you could please do the roll call.
Yes, Chairman. Carlson?
Here.
Citro?
Here.
King Selder?
Here.
Boot?
Here.
Vanescacal?
Here.
Miranda?
Here.
And Vera?
Here. Thank you for that, okay. A reminder to everybody who's going to be speaking that if you are not speaking, to please mute your phone. State your name before you speak. Following this meeting, there will be a 15-minute break, and then the meeting of the CRA will convene, which will be a separate meeting chaired by our colleague, Councilman Citro. The CRA meeting will not begin before 12:30. Beforehand, I wanted to read the public notice, if I may, and it goes as follows. Pursuant to Rule 3F of Tampa City Council Rules of Procedure, an emergency meeting is called. The purpose of this special call is to review and discuss available options for conducting future city council meetings while the state of emergency is in effect as related to the COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting is held in accordance with declarations and provisions of the Governor's Executive Order 20-69. It shall be conducted by remote participation or teleconferencing, which is what is referred to by the state of Florida rules as "communications media technology." No -end quote, no official action will be taken. Like last time, I wanted just to briefly begin with two things. First, again, I wanted to thank my colleagues for their work this past two days in cooperation in these unique format. I again appreciate it, and I again wanted to thank the administration for putting this meeting together today, Chief Bennett and staff, especially Legal, that I know did a lot of work and research on this, and we appreciate that. Second, again, procedure for today, it is largely the same as last time, except with fewer risks or more liberality, I should say. First, Chief Bennett and the administration are going to give their presentation, which will run about 30 minutes, I'm told. There will be clearly no questions during the presentation, but afterwards. The administration is giving us about 90 minutes of their valuable time, up to potentially 120 or so, I believe, 110. I appreciate it and will respect it. Thereafter, I want to give each council member seven minutes, or the time apportioned that we have left over, which should be each roughly seven minutes, to ask questions and make any statements. And I'll go in alphabetical order, again, beginning with Councilman Carlson. We will hold to this. I would ask that when a council member has the floor, that nobody else, excluding myself in rare circumstances, or Mr. Shelby intervenes. And again, if we have more time at the end, and more questions are needed on the part of council members, we'll again go down the line for that, and that should take us to the mark for CRA. Again, no votes, no motions. This will be an overview of the feasibility of future council meetings with regards to consent agenda, non-quasi-judicial hearings, and quasi-judicial hearings. And I will hand it off to Chief Bennett. Go, sir.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Council, and good morning, the public. As the Chairman mentioned, we felt, we, the administration, felt it would be better for decision support to frame this out, frame this presentation for about 30 minutes, to allow council to and the public to absorb that, and then handle a Q and A period that is necessary to make some decisions about moving council forward. I want to make one technical comment before we begin our presentation. The broadcast section of this is what we're going to try and keep pace with. I'm monitoring both the public broadcast through CCTV, as well as the Internet broadcast through our website. There is a little bit of a time disparity between the two, maybe 10 seconds or so. So depending on how the public is viewing this through CCTV channel or through the Internet, they may see a different slide at a different time, but all of the content will be broadcast. With that, I would ask our team to bring up the welcome slide, which I do see now on the CCTV channel. Can you back up one slide, please, to the welcome slide?
I don't think they've moved forward.
All right. So to kick this off, Council, I just kind of want to give a quick current state of both COVID-19 and as that relates to our legal and administrative state of operations from the beginning of our crisis or our emergency. As I mentioned on Tuesday, we're in this immediate state of resiliency and sustainability, and we're adapting and mitigating to the, obviously, the business and the continuity of government as we go forward. As a reminder, this is a Department of Health and a Surgeon General lead with a unified command in emergency management at the local, county, state, and of course, the federal levels. We're trying to manage the shocks of COVID-19, which are in the immediacy, and the stressors of continuity of government and the economic challenges that we're facing. So I wanted to take just a couple seconds and allow Gina Grimes, our city attorney, to give an update on how we're operating in our current state, and then I will support that with a quick update on how we're handling this administratively, and then we'll go into the rest of the slides. Gina?
Good morning, everyone. Gina Grimes, city attorney. We touched on this in our emergency meeting on the 31st, and I just want to explain what the legal status of our operations are following the mayor's declaration of a state of local emergency. As I mentioned on the 31st, on March 12th, the County Emergency Policy Group issued an order declaring a local state of emergency. And that same day, the mayor followed suit and by executive order declared a state of local emergency pursuant to our city code. Upon invocation of the executive order and her emergency powers, she was authorized, the mayor is authorized, to exercise certain limited emergency powers and authority. The best way to describe those is to refer to them as the continuity of government powers. And they include allowing the mayor, without council approval, to enter into contracts, incur obligations, and acquire, distribute supplies, materials, and those kinds of actions. And the city code authorizes the mayor, authorizes by operation of law, actually, that certain ordinance and other kinds of legal requirements and procedures are waived, and that's what allows her to exercise this continuity of government powers. Under the city code, she's also authorized to exercise certain other additional powers, which she has done by executive order. Those include such measures as anti-price gouging, closing city beaches, city recreational facilities and city parks, and other actions, other measures to regulate businesses. Now, all of the regulations on the businesses have now been superseded by the state's stay-at-home order, so those are no longer effective. So it's those additional powers she's exercised regarding price gouging, closure of the beaches, and other city facilities that are still in existence. So that basically sums up for you what authority that the mayor has under the state of local emergency. And I think our next step that Chief Bennett wants to address is how we can best meet council's needs as far as continuity of government powers and how these public meetings can be conducted going forward. Chief Bennett?
Thank you, Gina. Again, John Bennett, Chief of Staff, City of Tampa. The administrative state, under what Ms. Grimes just spoke about, kind of caught us in between a council session that was planned two weeks prior. The focus on moving government forward, or what Ms. Grimes talked about, is continuity of government is a balancing act, of course. And in concert, through city council attorney, we've been sharing information to make sure that we are as transparent, as inclusive as possible, to keep government moving, but yet delay or postpone those things that either by legal or necessity can wait until we are back in session, which is one of the goals today. Next slide. So you should be looking at what's called the slide COVID-19 Strategy in Context. I'm going to take two seconds and cover this. The strategy on the left, I talked about Tuesday, that our goal is to stay sanitized, both as an individual and an environment. One of the things we keep hearing from the public health community is to pretend everybody has the virus and pretend everything you touch has residue from the virus on it to protect yourself. We also include the social and workplace and physical distancing as part of all the orders that you already heard, and we're doing everything possible to encourage personal responsibility and medical support, to monitor wellness, to possibly create a collection, quarantine, and a testing opportunity for individuals to make sure that we flatten the curve, which is the ultimate mission. And while we're doing that, we're asking everybody to stay calm and be nice and support each other as a community. Now, to quickly contextualize that, as we've been saying over and over again since this started, is we're looking for the best way to continue the continuity of government, which is a balancing act, as you already know. And that's balance between handling the emergency efforts to, obviously, ultimately save lives and flatten the curve, but also keep the economy as sustainable and in a state of recovery as possible. And a good example of that is our strategy around fiscal responsibility. Once again, there's a balance between trying to push consent items through that have a secured price point, where we are saving tax dollars, and we're able to keep the equipment and the logistics moving for the city, but at the same time, balance that against the timeliness and the necessity of those items under the mayor's emergency powers. Next slide, please. So as part of your decision support today, I put together what I call the Risk Factor Rubric. And we already discussed the COVID-19 risk, which is any kind of assembly that creates what the CDC has talked about, 10 or less against 10 or more, and keeping a six-foot distance. We have technological risks, of course. You could see that on Tuesday, we were audio only. Today, we progressed to some slides to enhance the public's viewing and city council's interaction. Ms. Grimes will talk about through the presentation, the varying legal risks on our opportunities, and the operational risks of moving and shifting staff and logistics to support the necessary level of the continuity of government as it relates to supporting city council action. So we are looking at a phasal approach from the administration. Of course, when we get to the Q and A for council, this can be discussed further, and I'm going to let Gina Grimes, the city attorney, talk about the three levels of what we're calling the emergency meetings, limited meetings, or full meetings. Gina?
Gina Grimes, city attorney. As you see from this slide, we have three phases of which we have, are proposing to resume city council meetings. The first phase, which is the emergency meetings, we've already undertaken. Last Tuesday, we had an all-virtual meeting in the sunshine, meaning public notice was given, the public was in attendance virtually, and minutes were taken. We did not, however, have public participation, and that made it somewhat simpler, I think, than the second phase and the third phase might be, and I'll explain that in just one minute. So we know we can accomplish virtually the emergency meetings, which don't involve the public participation. The next phase of meetings that we are proposing be considered to discuss at this emergency meeting is what we are calling the limited meetings, the limited city council meetings. What do we mean by that? We are proposing that at these limited meetings, that you would consider items on your consent agenda, items that are approved by resolution. We could even have legislative public hearings for ordinances, like, for example, text amendments or comp plan amendments. It would exclude, at this stage, what were the typical city council activities, like ceremonial activities, staff appearances, and then quasi-judicial hearings. And the reason that we're proposing these types of limited meetings is because when it comes to the issue, and this is the risk that John referred to, when it comes to the issue of public participation, the more public that participation that's involved, the more difficult it becomes from a technological standpoint, and the riskier it becomes, especially with respect to quasi-judicial hearings, and I'll cover those in just one second. But as you may have seen yesterday, at the BOCC meeting for the all-for-transportation tax issue, there were a lot of glitches, technological glitches, that occurred as a result of allowing the public to participate virtually. There were several people, it appeared, that were trying to, they were in a virtual queue, and were trying to comment, and were unable to do so because of technical difficulties. When those kinds of things happen, it creates a situation where people can raise due process issues. Another example of technological issues that I think we've all actually had ourselves is sometimes people will be on mute and don't realize it, and they're talking and talking, and, you know, the other side is waiting to hear from them, and they're already, their time has passed, and they were on mute the whole time. So you have those kinds of just real practical difficulties involved with conducting public virtual meetings when there's public participation. So we think, though, that we have some measures, I think John is going to address, as to how we can allow for full and meaningful public participation in what we call the Phase Two Limited Meetings. Now, when it comes to the Phase Three city council meetings, the full city council meetings, that would include quasi-judicial hearings, there are a substantial number of additional risks associated with those quasi-judicial hearings, and they all revolve around accommodating public participation. When I say public, I mean not just the general public, but participation by the petitioners and the various people that are advancing the petitions, the quasi-judicial petitions. When the participants, and some might be asking, well, people have conference calls and virtual meetings all the time, and that's true, but that's usually when the participants are known. When you have to set up a system where people are calling in, and you don't know who it is that's going to be calling in, and you have to give them an opportunity to speak virtually, that's when the difficulties have, it appears, based on what others have done, that's when the difficulties and risks are incurred. We have found, I think, and John, again, will address ways to accomplish Phase One and Phase Two public participation, but the issue with Phase Three participation is, in a quasi-judicial hearing, you have three issues that a court looks at, and that's, you have to make sure that there's, you follow the essential requirements of law, you have to make sure that you base your decision on competent and substantial evidence, and then the third, and all-important and relevant in this situation, criterion for quasi-judicial hearings, is that you have to comply with or follow procedural due process. So again, that means procedural due process, not just for the petitioners of a quasi-judicial application, but also for the general public that may want to have input on a quasi-judicial application. And the reason it becomes difficult is, unlike most other types of actions that city council takes, in a quasi-judicial hearing, you have individuals have to be sworn, they have to, their testimony has to be under oath. The Supreme Court recently issued an administrative order in this emergency situation, saying that the typical requirement for a notary or other person who gives an oath having to be physically present with the person to whom the oath is given is waived. However, the person giving the oath has to have the ability to view the person that's giving the oath and to be able to identify the person giving the oath. So that would mean, in our situations, when the clerk gives the oath at a quasi-judicial hearing and swears everyone in, that she would be able to, she would have to have some sort of visual contact and ability to identify everyone that's sworn in. So that's one issue as far as administration of the oath and quasi-judicial hearings. Another issue is authenticating the various witnesses that might testify. People could represent themselves to be someone other than they are when they're not present. We don't have any other way of identifying who the person was that was on the phone. Another issue is with expert testimony. A lot of times, experts are qualified as to their, what their various qualifications are, that, again, without there being some sort of visual contact or interaction with an expert, that makes that more difficult. Another issue which we're somewhat concerned about is the cross-examination of witnesses. In a quasi-judicial hearing, although we, the City of Tampa, doesn't typically allow for or provide cross-examination of witnesses, if pressed, we would have to allow it, and so we would have to be able to set up some sort of virtual scenario which would accommodate and allow for petitioners to cross-examine witnesses and for the public to cross-examine witnesses of the petitioner. We also have an issue of how do we deal with the remote introduction of evidence? A lot of times at our quasi-judicial hearings, members of the public will come up, they'll have photographs, they'll have diagrams and so forth. How do we assure for the introduction of those kinds of documents into evidence and assure that the clerk has a copy of those documents for the record? And then we also have the issue of site plan review. A lot of times in the quasi-judicial hearings, you'll be looking at a site plan, and as the hearing proceeds, the petitioners often will propose changes and point to various different items on a site plan that require visual interaction. So as you can see, the quasi-judicial hearings, more so than the Phase One hearing or the Phase Two Limited Meetings, they're basically a breeding ground for the creation of procedural due process issues. And that doesn't mean that we're not willing to consider any options that we might have if they're technologically viable and legally supportable, but as you can see, it's not as simple as some might think that it would be. But we are continuing to monitor what other jurisdictions do. But given, just to be honest with you, given the staff resources that we're currently allocating to the four land use lawsuits, quasi-judicial lawsuits that are pending right now, including these lawsuits that have claims for damages and attorney's fees, I'm letting you know, I'm going to proceed in a very careful, measured manner with regard to virtual quasi-judicial hearings. I need to assure that we're not subjecting the city to any additional legal and financial liability than what we're currently dealing with. And I do believe that these virtual quasi-judicial hearings will, in fact, give anybody that is unhappy or unsatisfied with your decision in one of these quasi-judicial hearings, it will give them fertile ground to appeal it based on procedural due process. So with that, I'll turn it back over to John.
All right. Thank you, Gina. John Bennett, Chief of Staff. Next slide, please. So just a quick overview, again, to how to frame our decisions this morning. The objectives are very simple. We're looking to have a good faith level of continuity of government, balancing the risk factors of COVID-19 against the administration and the technology ability that we can serve the public. We ultimately look for as much inclusion as possible, again, with those aforementioned safeguards. And lastly, we want to keep a level of transparency while doing city business. Again, scale to the level of risk factors that we discussed. Next slide, please. So this is quite obvious, but just for the public's understanding as well, that we're going to go into these decisions today, looking at what we believe are the stakeholders, clearly the public, city council, and city council staff, and of course, the mayor's administration and staff, to include the clerk's office in trying to facilitate the best outcome this morning for council going forward. Next slide, please. So I'm going to give a very high-level overview. Again, this is just a framework to support your decisions today. We're going to put three models up there. The first one we're going to talk about will be actually the virtual model. Then we're going to talk about a hybrid model between, and then finally, an all-present model. So we will begin with the next slide of the virtual model. So the virtual model basically is all council, either voice and slides, or if we can evolve to a video opportunity, to make sure that that technology can be sustainable throughout the meeting and throughout the journey of this level of effort and level of service to the public. But then to the left, you see that the public comment and broadcast features have to align as well. We had talked extensively yesterday about public comment, which we know is a big part of our government responsibility, and we've basically identified three options that we think are viable, even in a single-meeting system, absent of what Ms. Grimes talked about as it relates to quasi-judicial, but in the emergency meeting scenario, which we're doing now. But in a limited environment, how could the public engage and feel like we have met that level of service for public engagement and public involvement? One of the options that we've discussed is making sure public comment would have a window before the meeting, possibly two days. Example, if the meeting is scheduled for Thursday, we would allot all day Monday and all day Tuesday of that week to collect public comment through a web portal. Technology and innovation is working on a way to just to collect that public comment to align itself with what a three-minute commentary period would be, which is often given by council. And then we would need to find a way to get that public comment into the record as part of the meeting, and make sure that the person sending that in had confidence that it made it to the city for the record. The other option would be telephonic message, again, with the same parameters as a web portal, but that would give more inclusion for those folks that may not be technical-savvy to get into a web portal, fill out a form, and send it in, and do it that way. But a voicemail message, again, same duration, depending on council's wishes, one minute, two minutes, three minutes, and then find a way to make sure that got into record with the clerk. And then lastly, you heard Ms. Grimes talk about in the quasi-judicial, which is, again, a space that we're recommending the most challenges with, is to be able to deliver some sort of exhibit if you're in this virtual mode, and that would probably require some sort of drop-off to city council or some sort of file electronically to make sure that if they were giving public comment and included some sort of exhibit, that we would have it in the record. And so that may create a third scenario where they would have to drop that off on Monday or Tuesday ahead of the council meeting, and then the administration, the clerk's office, would sort that information on Wednesday ahead of the meeting on Thursday. So that kind of covers the whole spectrum of public comment that we're trying to increase the inclusion about. And then as far as staff goes, on a virtual environment, much like we are today, we would be in, we would be teleworking through city council with voice and complemented possibly by slides, so the viewer would see who was talking, just like you saw the Chairman Vera's slide in the beginning. And of course, we would have those slides made for everybody on city council, as well as Ashley Baumann's area marketing communication has already developed slides for most of our staff. Next slide, please. The hybrid opportunity is a combination, and I'm probably going to give it back to Ms. Grimes for a second, about a physical quorum, which, again, slightly increases the COVID risk, although we could get the separation and distancing, depending on the venue, and using voice for the remaining three council members to participate virtually, and again, using slides to designate which council person is currently speaking. The public comment and the broadcast would remain the same as we spoke about in virtual, unless for some reason we wanted to have a limited number of public come on. for some reason we wanted to have a limited number of public come on site. And just to kind of build on that for a second, if we did allow physical public participation, no matter what the venue was, and we designed it around the COVID risk, you've got to keep in mind that if we're using the 10-person per room or per setting, that by the time you get past the council numbers and possibly the support staff, only one person would be able to be in that room speaking, and then we would have the lag time of getting somebody out of a second or tertiary room that was also being simulcast into those rooms. So you can see very quickly that 10, 20, 30 people create a pretty large environment. We would have to move the venue to the convention center, which is possibly downstream of hospital surge capacity. So any environment that we stood up, we would have to quickly adapt if we were not able to keep the curve flat below the medical capability of the city and the region. And then lastly, you can see underneath that, the different risk factors that we talked about, scale accordingly to the virtual or the hybrid model. Next slide, please. Obviously, the easiest one from a logistics point of view is to have full presence and yet scale the venue to decrease the COVID risk factors by separating council, you know, well above the six feet, and separating the public participation. But again, having to scale that and increase staff and the level of personal protection equipment to do all the security environment and all the handling of documents and handling of podiums, et cetera, in even a larger venue, and then creating those staging rooms with the virtual technology pending that person's opportunity to speak. So you can see as we go through a complete virtual to a hybrid to a full present model, that's the differences. And whether they scale over time, or there's a decision today to balance the continuity of government against the risk factors and the administration's support, we just wanted to give you a full framework to support those decisions and discussions going into the balance of the meeting. And before I turn it back to the chairman, I want to see if Ms. Grimes has any additional comments about those three models.
Gina Grimes, City Attorney. The only thing I wanted to add was the reason that we came up with a hybrid scenario for these limited meetings is because, as most of you know, the governor did in fact issue an executive order 20-69 in which he said that he suspended any state statute that requires a quorum to be physically present. Some individuals have questioned the legal authority for the governor to suspend that statute in this situation. So the hybrid scenario that we proposed avoided the risk that would be involved in availing ourselves of that, the governor's waiver of the statute. So what we had proposed would be that there still be a physical quorum present in the room, therefore thereby not having to rely on the governor's executive order, and then allowing the rest of the council members that did not feel comfortable physically attending the meeting to still participate by teleconferencing. And that type of scenario is what the Attorney General sanctioned and approved of in an Attorney General's opinion issued very recently in response to the situation of local government meetings. So the hybrid model is in line with what the Attorney General has sanctioned, and it avoids the issue of the validity of the governor's executive order dealing with sunshine law. And I'm not opining on whether I believe it's valid or not. At this stage, there's no reason to believe that it isn't, but there is a risk associated with it. And then just let me go back and just finalize on the point of why it seems that we are so carefully evaluating all the different issues associated with the legal risks involved in meetings. I know you've all known and seen that other jurisdictions are conducting meetings, and Marty Shelby can add to this if he'd like, but the risk involved in conducting a meeting that doesn't comply with the sunshine law is that anyone challenging it even after the fact can claim that the actions taken were invalidated. So that's why we're trying to be so careful in making sure that we do in fact comply with the sunshine law and that we allow council to participate, we allow the public to participate, and that we can be assured that if you do in fact act and hold these meetings, that your actions will not later be invalidated or challenged. So I'm going to conclude with that remark.
Thank you Gina. John Bennett, Chief of Staff. At this time, I'm going to forego giving a technical overview because I think we framed those up, and I'd rather give time back to council for the question and answer period and to support your decisions going forward. So with that, I will turn it back to Chairman Vera.
Thank you, everybody, for your very detailed presentation. We appreciate that a great deal. Okay, now we'll be going to each council member with this imperfect venue that we have. And my clock says about 11:40, so I think if we do about seven minutes each council member, and some people may take a minute more, some people may take four minutes less, then I think we can get within that. So this will be reserved for comments, questions, et cetera, and we begin with Councilman Carlson.
Morning, everybody. Thanks so much for putting all this together. Gina, the first thing I was going to ask you is about those comments we'd gotten from members of the public about the legality of the governor's order. So it sounds like you don't want to talk about that in depth, but any other thoughts on that before we continue?
Well, that's in fact, you're on point. That's in fact why we suggested the hybrid approach, is then we can avoid that issue altogether. The hybrid approach is directly in line with what the Attorney General has sanctioned. She said that, you know, unless and until judicially or legislatively determined otherwise, her position was that physical quorum was required to conduct a meeting.
The second thing, and thank you for, yeah, you talked about that longer a minute ago. I don't want to make you waste your time, but the second thing is, is there any liability in not holding quasi judicial meetings? You know, in the last meeting we had, there were members of the public ready to speak, there were petitioners ready to go, and they were asking us to continue. Is there any downside to delaying this indefinitely because of the potential liability of holding those meetings?
Whenever the governor declares a state of emergency, as he's done in this instance, there's a provision under state law that says that certain deadlines associated with development orders and certain building permits are stayed during the pendency of the emergency. And that, in fact, the League of Cities has on their website, has a link to that statutory provision and has taken note of the fact that to the extent that statute applies to any deadlines like you're speaking of, that they would be stayed during the pendency of a state of emergency. As far as the individuals, petitioners, members of the public expecting these quasi judicial hearings to go forward, you know, the mayor, under her executive authority, her executive orders, I'm sorry, an emergency authority, has the power to suspend or stay, waive the various different regulations and procedures that are otherwise in effect pursuant to law. So I don't think we have a legal obligation to move forward within a certain timeframe under the current state of emergency that we're operating under.
Yeah, thank you. And the part of it that I'm most concerned about, which I think other folks are, is once we're past the immediate health crisis, and the health issues are obviously the ones that we want you all to focus on, we all need to be focused on, but once we get past that, this has really decimated the economy. And we already were coming off, you know, eight kind of mediocre years, and we were just getting our financial footing again. My concern is that if we are unable to move some of these forward, it may slow the economy from catching wind again quickly. Were you just saying that the mayor could approve some of these, or are you just saying that under the orders were...
Yeah, no, I wasn't saying that at all. What I was saying is that under any requirement in our code that would require us to act on a quasi judicial petition, you know, within a certain timeframe, that those kinds of procedural requirements could in fact be waived or altered under her emergency powers. I didn't mean that she was considering approving any quasi judicial matters, absolutely not.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, yeah. And as far as getting the economy, you know, back up and running again as quickly as possible or contributing it to the extent that we can, believe me, nobody better than me, as a previous former land use lawyer, understands the needs of the clients in the business community and wanting to move these quasi judicial hearings forward as quickly as possible. And even though in my remarks this morning, I mentioned to you all the concerns I have with conducting them virtually, that doesn't mean that I'm sitting back and not continuing to evaluate different alternatives that we could undertake to try to resume the quasi judicial hearings as quickly as possible. And I think also Chief Bennett has a suggestion about what council can do themselves to accelerate the quasi judicial hearings once these hearings are resumed. Chief, do you want to address that?
Well, one concept, John Bennett, Chief of Staff, one concept, Councilman, is to look at increasing the meeting pace once we have reduced the COVID risk to the community and to the, of course, the council and the administration, and trying to increase the pace of those. You know, we currently meet on Thursday, and we know, as Ms. Grimes mentioned, that part of our balancing act here is to keep the economy stable and then recover as quick as possible. So, and that's part of the reason we want to keep the continuity of government going on those consent items, is to, again, protect the procurement process and the price points, and to keep government moving in parallel to the emergency. So, you know, one option would be to increase the meeting rate until we caught up and moved and stimulated the economy back to as close to normal as possible.
Great, thank you. And hopefully, on one of these future meetings, we can get Carol Post in too. I know several of us, I think, have been in touch with her, and look forward to trying to help her in whatever she's going to do to help stimulate the economy as well. One thing, as an aside, I would just suggest that all of you and my colleagues think about, as we're going through this process, as I understand it, 10 or 12 years ago, these special powers were put in place, approved by council. And I would just suggest that we all think about this process and think about not just the ability of city council to meet, but also the special powers, and see if there's anything we need to modify along the way. We're lucky that we have, you know, a mayor who's very collaborative, and Chief of Staff and others who are obviously collaborative and process-oriented and work with us, and I want to thank you all for the transparency that you all have given us in showing us the things that are being approved. So I think you're going out of your way to be transparent, collaborative, and it might be just good at the end of all this to look back, not just from a technological point of view, but from a rule point of view and figure out if we should adapt at the end. The next thing is that, the biggest drumbeat I hear is that the public wants to have a chance to, number one, hear what's going on. You know, the mayor has a talk show every day, and there are other programs that are out there where people are hearing things. But I think they're used to hearing also in this kind of forum and on a regular schedule. And so to the extent that we can inform the public would be great. And then also, the biggest part of that also, because they are getting lots of information, they want to be able to get feedback. And some people are emailing us and calling us, but they're also used to being able to get feedback in a public forum. And so as soon as we can get to that, the better, and thank you all for thinking through the legal and technological limitations of it. Another quick thing, there may be a lot of people listening, and one of the big questions I've gotten is, what do people do when they see folks breaking the rules? Huge crowd gathering is one complaint. Another complaint is people working in workplace environments where they say the owners of the businesses are not sticking to the rules. So could you all just state publicly what their response to that, what our response to that should be?
And this is Chairman Vera, if I may, one more minute for your time, Councilman Carlson. You're over, but that's fine, but just one more minute just to finish that up, if you don't mind. Go ahead, sir.
Right, thank you. Chief Bennett, could you just, did you hear my question?
I did. If I understood it properly, Councilman, it was, and we understand a couple of things before I answer the question, that public engagement is big. You know, we want to have that two-way communication with the public as much as possible, which in part is why the call center was opened up, to allow that real-time feedback. And we want to get as much public engagement as possible, whether it's at the emergency level or the limited level, and of course, pending the quasi judicial level of the phases that Ms. Grimes talked about. But going back to public risk in some level of immediacy, if there is a situation that requires clarification about the current rules that are in practice, you know, Ms. Baumann's group is updating our website in real time based on the orders that are coming out. You can see the dynamism and the change between Tuesday and today. We've already had a new order come out from the state, so we're trying to keep that up to date in real time as much as possible. And then all of these briefing packets are given to the call center for the public to be able to call. Again, during the public opportunity for that at the call center is 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. And last weekend, looking forward to this weekend, is either going to be 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., 10:00 to 4:00 p.m. And then on top of that, if we see a flagrant violation in the community of one of the orders, our recommendation is to call the non-emergency law enforcement line that is published on our website, and most of our citizens have that number. And of course, that doesn't ever exclude 911 if you think it's a critical situation.
Hey, thank you all, before you cut me off, thank you all so much for everything you're doing. Thank you to the mayor for keeping things moving forward and for your transparency. And thanks especially to all the first responders for putting your lives on the line every day for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Next, we move to Councilman Citro.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you very, very much. Councilman Carlson had some very, very good questions, and I checked most of my questions off. Thank you, Mr. Carlson, Councilman Carlson, for your insight, your questions on those. I just have a few more. One is a comment. I know we are going to be pressed for time during our meetings, no matter what phase they are in. Public comment, in my opinion, should be kept, two agenda items only. I'm just wondering, and Ms. Grimes, you briefed us rather well on legal liabilities. I'm still questioning those who might not be able to speak at any of these meetings, whether it be petitioners or public comment. How can we make sure that that gets done, no matter the phase that we do? Before you answer that, we are going to have to play catch-up on some items. Is there any thought to going and having more than one, excuse me, more meetings per month till we catch up? Ms. Grimes, if you want to go ahead and answer those two questions?
I'll answer the first one, as to how we can ensure we give the public an opportunity to participate. Like Chief Bennett has said, there's all these issues that we have to balance. I've considered the issue that some people don't have computers, don't know how to use computers, don't feel comfortable submitting comments, you know, through the internet. So we have, the hybrid model that we presented allows the opportunity for people, if they feel safe in doing so, to physically attend the meeting as they do now. And so that would, in an effort to be inclusive, that would be one option under the hybrid model. And then also, for individuals that don't feel comfortable in physically attending the meeting for safety issues, we would allow them to either submit, or we propose to allow that they can participate by either submission of a voicemail or submission of an online public comment form. So those were the three options that we would provide to the public as a mechanism to participate at the meetings and public hearings. And then I'll let Chief Bennett talk about the frequency of the meetings in order to play catch-up.
Thank you, Ms. Grimes. John Bennett, Chief of Staff. Great question, Councilman, about increasing the meeting pace. As the curve settles on COVID-19 and we can move staff more into normal operations, if you will, we are fully ready to accommodate additional agenda activity to, again, be inclusive and transparent with the public to the rate that it's needed. I think one of the benefits of the emergency powers is that there is a lot of opportunities... I think one of the benefits of the emergency powers is that there is a lot of, um, opportunity to work with the administration, to keep government moving. And a term that I've been using internally is we don't want to have an agenda tsunami when this is over. So we're trying to keep things moving as much as possible, one, to protect the price points, to keep the logistics moving and the leadership moving within the city for the sake of the levels of service that the city has established. And I always remind our administration that we do have one of the leanest forms of governments for a city our size, based on city employees against the population. So I think as we look at the agenda and accomplish what we can today, the ability to increase the frequency to catch up on those critical agenda items, um, will be perfectly in scope because we have been moving in parallel with the collaborative effort that Councilman Carlson just talked about and moving some of those, uh, quantified items, if you will, or the larger part of the consent items, uh, through an internal awareness process and execution by the mayor, uh, with this, this system we've created under the emergency powers. So, you know, in short, I would say that the things that are stacking up, uh, could be moved in an accelerated pace of either additional meetings within the same day, uh, morning and night, or, uh, an extra meeting during the week.
Chief, thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Grimes, thank you very much for your answer. I'm just hoping that we are not going to be putting, uh, through this crisis, any undue burden upon our petitioners and, and again, as Mr. Carlson said, uh, helping our economy get back on pace. At this time, Mr. Chair, I thank you for the opportunity to speak. I want to thank all city staff, uh, clerks, office, legal, uh, and everybody for working together again. We will all get through this together. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Citro for that. Uh, next we move to Councilman Dingfelter. Go ahead, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to every, all the participants. Um, just a couple of things, um, on this, very important issues. Um, I'm going to start backwards, uh, in regard to the quasi judicial. Um, clearly Ms. Grimes has identified and, and Mr. Bennett, Ms. Grimes identified the legal constraints and hurdles, Mr. Bennett's identified some of the physical constraints and hurdles. Um, I think that at this time, uh, we need to just take quasi judicial off, you know, off the, out of the discussion. Um, I just wanted to let you know that I've, I've chatted with a, a couple of, uh, of the land use attorneys and also Mr. Miccolini, uh, who's obviously in front of us often, to get their input, um, on this. And, um, uh, they, they differ a little bit. Uh, one of the attorneys says he's busier than ever and his clients are chomping at the bit to move forward as soon as possible. Another input I got was that, that they can wait, they can wait a bit, but they need some certainty. They need some, they need, well, we all need certainty in this uncertain environment, but they, they would appreciate some certainty in terms of a plan, uh, whether or not it's, uh, you know, mid-May or something like that. So in regard to notice, so they can notice, uh, all involved, continue to notice all involved, and they'd like us to at least come up with a plan for mid-May for quasi judicial. So, um, both to Gina and to Mr. Bennett, I know we're not voting today, but I'll, I'll give my preference in that regard. I think we should have a, a contingency plan for quasi judicial that probably speaks to, um, some type of, uh, uh, you know, physical, uh, setting, uh, perhaps at the convention center in a very, very large setting, um, where a quasi judicial process can, you know, can, can be undertaken in a traditional forum, but in a very spread out and social distance form. Um, in regard to our regular meetings, as you all know, I take our regular meetings, as, as we all do, all seven of us, very, very seriously. I think we, we have a very important function in terms of checks and balances with the administration. I think that's what the charter speaks to and I think that's why we are elected. And I know you guys know how, how strongly I feel about that in regard to all the questions that I, that I asked about lots of stuff. With that said, and I, I say this very hesitantly, but with that said, I, I think I need to balance that with all, everything else that's going on, on a risk benefit analysis. Um, and really ask the question of, are we currently an essential service? In other words, as, as Mr. Carlson pointed out, the administration's doing a good job, the mayor's doing a good job of temporarily taking over our functions. Um, and, and but, at the same time, receiving our input, you know, on, on consent items, pulling certain consent items that aren't necessary, uh, to move forward on because they're not emergency, they're not essential, and, um, and, and taking our input and deferring others that need deferring. So I just wonder if we shouldn't continue along with that path for at least another month. Um, again, I say that very hesitantly. Um, my, my druthers is that we would figure it out and figure out a way to meet, um, but I'm very concerned about the, about the, if we could just meet telephonically, I'd be fine. But I'm very concerned about the notion of at least four council members having to get together to hold any kind of legitimate meeting. And my concern is several. Number one, you're putting four council members at COVID risk. Uh, number two, um, you're putting the community at, potentially at COVID risk to the extent that the community comes down to give us public input. And number three is, what is the optics, what is the, what are the optics of, of seeing four council members, or four or more council members together, um, at this point in time when we're telling everybody to stay home? Um, and, and I think that we have to be concerned about those optics. You know, when they see the mayor out there, uh, you know, typically they see her alone or with one other person appropriately spaced, but if council gets together on a very, very small dais and there's four, you know, four or more of us, we are not spacing appropriately. So, um, I don't know if I have any questions. Uh, Ms. Grimes, Ms. Bennett and all the rest have been very forthright in answering questions, uh, and giving us this presentation. But again, I circle back to, at this point in time, I'm not really convinced that, that we are an essential service, um, and therefore I'm not really convinced that, uh, that, you know, that we need to be doing anything more than we're doing right now. I think weekly updates, telephonic, uh, conferences like this, I think are very valuable and it's good that the public can tune in. But, um, uh, I'll, I'll listen and see what, you know, see if anybody else has any other ideas. Sorry for the long monologue.
Uh, anything else, Councilman Dingfelter?
No, I'm just glad I wasn't on mute through all that.
That's funny. Thank you for that, sir. Uh, next we move to Councilman Gudes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I, I've heard some comments from my colleagues and I, I like some of them and some ideas I don't. I guess me being a public servant for a long, long time, I guess I've always been on the front line and serving the people. And that's why I look at council to be doing, serving the people, because we get phone calls every day and questions every day about what's going on and what's not going on. So I guess for me, I can be, a person can, can, uh, be on the fence with whatever way we go, but I just want to make sure however we do it, that the people are involved in the process, because that's what I'm hearing. They feel that they're not involved, they feel that council not really involved, because sometimes they call, we don't have information. But one thing I can say, I can rely on, uh, Chief John Bennett. He does come through, he does return the phone call, he does get those answers as soon as he can. So I'm grateful for that. I'm also grateful for the administration, you know, that we have a strong form of mayor of government and this type of mayor we have has really been working with us and, and I, I'm appreciative of that, because you can look at other places where you may not get any type of consideration, especially with this state of emergency order that's in. Uh, I think, like Mr. Carlson said, after it's all been done, we have to have an after-action plan to review everything that's gone on within the city, uh, so we can make sure that we've got some checks and balances going forward in the future in case we have another situation like this. For me, uh, I like to meet, but again, uh, if the, after hearing all the councilors, they believe we need to just keep staying home and being virtual, I can live with that. But I'm a person, I like to hear what the people are saying and having, uh, an opportunity to talk back with them. But any ideas that, that come forth, I'm willing to be on board to be a team player. Uh, I guess one thing I would like to talk about, Mr. Chairman, is I, I'm getting a lot of calls from the African-American community about the testing. So hopefully I won't be late by the time now, but hopefully, uh, Chief Bennett can tell me, uh, what we're doing about that, because I'm getting a, a lot of calls about, uh, folks not being tested in the African-American community. So I, I definitely need to get that addressed sometime today. Um, I don't have too much more to say, Mr. Chairman, just that I'll be a team player on whatever side of things we need to be on, but just I want to make sure that the, we're, we're still engaging the public and they're getting information. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Chief Bennett, did you have any response at this time or later?
John Bennett, Chief of Staff, thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Councilman Gudes and Councilman Dingfelter. I'm going to try and do a combination answer to both what Councilman Dingfelter mentioned as, as way of, of being the fourth point about public engagement and then also the testing, uh, for the community and specifically, as Councilman Gudes mentioned, the concerns in the African-American community. First, if it's council's pleasure, um, to have an, a, an emergency meeting once a week to have this update, the dialogue, uh, without taking action, uh, the first recommendation I would have is to possibly make it on Tuesday. Tuesday and Saturday is Monday and Thursday, uh, we're having emergency policy group meetings, uh, with the county. And as I mentioned earlier, the dynamism of these orders and the COVID-19 emergency management is, uh, pretty much on those few days. Secondly, um, if there was emergency meetings for, uh, information, using a progressive opportunity with the public is one concept, one concept could be to bring in public comment to that emergency meeting, just knowing that, of course, I would always defer to, to, uh, Mr. Shelby on that and Gina Grimes about the, uh, council not taking action, but just making sure the voice of the community was brought to that emergency meeting for information updates on, uh, Tuesday. Secondly, uh, going back to the testing, um, as you know, from a nation and, and a locality, uh, the mayor has pushed heavily to get, uh, testing as much as possible and as much as the logistics will allow us, calling for test kits to be brought into this area from the, uh, from the federal supply line, if you will, and looking at alternative opportunities and working with the public health community, uh, and calling further west as we saw this pandemic move, um, across the globe and hit our western states and then of course our northeastern states to the level that they have. The mayor has been calling to see what advanced information that we could get and align that with the opportunities we have here locally. Um, the challenges across the board have been the collection kits, um, and the, and the quantity of those collection kits. And she had, the very first thing that she did, as you know, is brought the, all the hospital networks together and tried to get an understanding of process and capacity to collect, which would also, once you triaged into a collection, we know that you would go into a state of quarantine and reduce the COVID risk and what we call flattening the curve pending those test results. Um, the mayor's been on the phone daily with some public health leadership model, whether it's at the local, state, national and, and even beyond level, uh, trying to get additional information to continue to flatten that curve. And then we bring those logistical needs to the county emergency operations center, the county EOC, who is the lead emergency management group for Hillsborough County, which includes the city of Tampa. And then, of course, they report up to the state. And the more that we get in collection kits, the longer the county will keep open their triage line, uh, which is accessible to everybody in Hillsborough County to be able to, uh, get those tests. Currently Raymond James Stadium is open, um, and the call center for Raymond James is open, as well as the Department of Health, depending on, uh, individual's situation. And of course, any local providers. It's my understanding from talking to the public health network, that about 72% of our health network in Hillsborough County are private providers on a small scale and the balance are the larger, which is the hospitals and the Department of Health. So the, the best opportunity for any citizen in any community is to go to the county's, uh, triage phone line, uh, in Hillsborough County and get triaged and an opportunity to go through the Raymond James collection site or additional collection sites that will be stood up. And we also recommend all of the public to monitor the emergency policy group meeting today at 1:30 that the county holds now twice a week on Monday and Thursday at 1:30 PM to see what opportunities continue to exist, as well as how we're doing to flatten that curve. And if any of the councilmen need specific talking points around this, uh, either our Tampa Gov. website, or we can support, uh, specific needs through a memorandum to, through Marty Shelby, to all of you, to help share that with your respective community constituency.
Thank you, sir, for that. We appreciate that. Okay, uh, next we go to Councilman Meniscalco.
Thank you very much, Guido Meniscalco here. A lot of the questions have already been asked, uh, specifically by, um, Councilmembers Carlson and Councilmember Dingfelter. You know, this is, is, um, this is unprecedented. Of course, the, um, the governor issued the statewide stay-at-home order, which of course we've done locally. Um, now I know that non-essential businesses are, uh, to remain closed and we did, uh, receive the email from, uh, Attorney Shelby regarding, uh, a link, uh, what is considered essential and non-essential. So a lot of people are affected, uh, locally, they've been affected for the last month. Now a lot more people are going to be hurting, uh, for these next 30 days. And once we come out of this, um, it's going to be a, a, uh, post coronavirus world, because it's really changed the way, um, as they say in businesses, you know, they've learned to pivot in trying to survive. Um, now we see with, uh, with our city council meetings and city business, how, uh, land use and, and other issues have been essentially, you know, postponed indefinitely. I mean, I know we're having the discussion here, we're having these emergency meetings, uh, you know, by telephone, because of course health and safety is our number one priority. And, uh, it was already mentioned here a few minutes ago that, you know, if four council members meet or whatever, you know, people in close proximity, um, how, how dangerous is this? I was reading an article, I don't know if it was from, from, it was from a major news source, uh, about an hour ago, saying that, uh, this could be spread by breathing or coughing or speaking. So of course, you know, people are saying, you know, start wearing the mask and the masks are, are so important, especially if you're out in public or in, in, in close proximity with other people. I don't know, you know, I hope this curve is flattened and I hope that the measures that we've taken are going to show results quicker than the 30 days that the governor has issued this, uh, stay-at-home order. You know, we started seeing results in the next week or two, um, but of course, you know, we've ramped up our testing and, um, as more tests are being done, um, we're going to see more positive results, because of course, I mean, the numbers are climbing up, you know, only a limited amount of people have been tested and as more get tested, we see more positive results. So I hope that, that there's light at the end of this tunnel and we start flattening this curve and with the stay-at-home, which I believe will be affected, uh, effective, you know, per our mayor and for the county and the emergency management, uh, policy group and whatnot. Um, but we just have to play it by ear. I appreciate these meetings. I appreciate, uh, Chief of Staff, John Bennett. Again, you know, I've mentioned it before and I will again, you've been wonderful with the updates. Um, Marty Shelby, our, our city council attorney, on top of things, 24/7, always accessible, the mayor, Gina Grimes. Uh, I cannot imagine, you know, the workload that you have, because, um, you are always on call. This is a, a 24/7 emergency and everybody, I believe, is handling it very, very well, as well as council members. Council members, you know, we use, uh, social media, which is a tool that, that we really didn't have, uh, 15 years ago. Um, and we are able to, to, to get out to our constituents, at least to a certain degree, you know, messages and updates, which I know are very helpful. I see responses from, um, the people on my Facebook and, and Twitter accounts. Um, they appreciate the, uh, the information and we are all, you know, as council members, doing what we can, uh, at the same time trying to be safe, practicing that social distancing. Um, you know, I can say I haven't seen any of these council members in weeks, I haven't seen the mayor in weeks, because, you know, we've all been busy and we've all been apart and we've all been following the rules. So I appreciate, again, these emergency meetings, we'll play it by ear. Um, should the convention center in the future have to be an, an option, you know, I'm open for whatever is best for, uh, keeping the public safe, allowing us to move forward, um, doing business and whatever. in whatever capacity we can and within the limits of the law. You know, of course, we have sunshine issues and regardless of the governor waiving certain restrictions and whatnot, you know, we still have to make sure that we are legally protected in any decision that we're making. I know the mayor has, you know, through emergency powers and whatnot, you know, more ability to get things done, but, you know, again, the city of Tampa is open for business, you know, and people need to know that. And we are, as councilmembers and elected officials, doing our job just because people don't see us, we're doing it out of safety and taking the proper precautions. So that's all I have to say. You know, again, a lot of the questions have been asked and I appreciate it. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilman Meniscalco. We appreciate that. We have about 15 minutes, which should bring this into a smooth landing here. Councilman Miranda, go ahead, sir.
Mr. Chairman, there's three items, virtual only, hybrid, and present only. And when you're at war, and that's what this is, this is a war against something you don't see, something you can't feel, but something when it grabs you, you're going to have a problem. And that's the whole United States, not only here in the city of Tampa. Thank you all for doing what you're doing to solve this problem and try to get everyone safe and sound and financially able to pay your bills. So when I look at things, I look at them a little differently. I look at them, how do you handle it with what you have now? The same building, the same item. Let me go through them real quickly if I can remember them. First of all, present only. Counsel, way back in the '70s, used to meet twice a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays. Now let me tell you, how do you handle this in the same building we're in now without having to move and without violating any one of these special orders? First of all, you enter two ways to the council chambers. You got the west entrance, which is to the left of the elevator. You got the north entrance, to the right of the elevator. Then you have an entrance way through the detection machine into the council chambers, but we're forgetting that we have an exit area in the back of the room that, yes, it goes through another department, but we can have a rotating individuals come in and come out. We could have seven councilmembers here, four on the dais. The city council attorney would sit towards the back with a mic so he can be involved in all the discussions. One councilmember would sit there. You'd have at least eight to 10 feet between councilmembers. So you could have four members of the council on the dais, three back in the council chambers on a virtual phonic we have now, and you rotate the councilmembers every 45 minutes. So if you're going to have a, from nine o'clock on, you have the four councilmembers that are there, one leaves, the other one comes in. So everybody has the possibility of seeing the public and being with the public. The public is also given, when you talk about department stores and you talk about things, what do they give you when you come in? They give you a little ticket. What do they have on the other side? They got a machine that tells you what number's up. You have downstairs and another floor of the council, of this building, of the old council building, you have people sitting 10 feet apart from each other with a number. As the council starts with a public notice and public hearings, you go up one elevator, you speak, you go out the back and you get in the other elevator, which is only going to be used to going down, so you're not in the same elevator twice. You speak, you do your, whatever you got to speak, your three minutes, whatever the item is, and then what happens? You keep rotating that until everyone is heard under the public forum for a right to speak for three minutes. That's number one. Number two, all the hearings, I think, can be done very cordially. You have a city in the council chambers for about, I'd say, 100, and you put each one that comes up to you, number 47 is a hearing regarding public zonings, and you put them into different areas with out 10, 12, 15 feet from each other. You give them portable mics, they can speak, the chairman, whoever the chairman may be could rotate between two or three individuals. You do that and you can have that hearing done in this building, by my calculation, without violating any one of the order of the mayor, of the county, and of the governor. That's just my opinion, I may be wrong. So you have exits, you have entrances that are different, you meet twice a week until this is resolved, and these are the ways you handle these things without creating any more pressure to the general public, which wants to be heard and should be heard. So that's what I'm looking at. Maybe I'm wrong, but what I see here is something that we haven't looked at. When you're at war and the enemy's all around you, you can't leave. So you better bunker down where you're at and find out how to fight the other war. This, we are at war with a virus and that virus cannot win because it'll be destruction of all on earth. So you do the best you can with what you have and by rotating what I just said without violating, those are the two main things, you rotate, you do not violate, and you have the problem solved. That's just my opinion and I want to thank you for this time.
Thank you, Councilman Miranda. I appreciate it. Just, I guess, in closing on my remarks, you know, listening to what my colleagues have said here today, I tend to agree with comments made by Councilman Dingfelter, taking quasi-judicial off the radar for now. And I mean for now because we learn something new on this, it seems, every two or three weeks. Now, unfortunately, what we've been learning is bad things, so hopefully we'll be learning good things and that our work has been making progress. But I think that for right now, quasi-judicials are frankly legally risky under some methods and certainly risky from a public health perspective, not just to the public, but to the staff that needs to come in and deal with the issues that we're going to be addressing. You know, a comment has been made with regards to public comment and hearing from the public. If we go to modified meetings, we can certainly accommodate that. Something that I've been doing and trying to do for my own constituents is to have telephonic town halls. They're very imperfect. It is certainly a poor substitute for what we had, but it's unfortunately the only method, I think, that we have right now for a more robust discussion. I think that we all need to keep the attention on public health with an eye also on the economy. There's an equilibrium or a balance to be had here and we have to keep the right balance. I would like to see us move towards more limited meetings, particularly if, because there were the three options, particularly if those can be held over the phone or via Skype or whatever method that there is, if that can be done, that's certainly something that we should be able to do, to approve things that are not necessarily quasi-judicial, things like text amendments, bonds, et cetera, things that move our economy forward without putting the public health at risk. We need to continue to just really serve as role models on this. You know, something that this council began doing a month ago by canceling a meeting and then leading individually in our own lives, and every single councilmember here, all seven of us, by the way, have been very outspoken, I believe, in supporting social distancing. We've been very outspoken in terms of supporting directives and orders that keep social distancing first and foremost. So this is a council, all seven of us, who have been very, very supportive of public safety and I think we have to move forward in a way that keeps public safety first, but also makes us a good role model. When folks take a look at their elected officials, they want role models. If we're going to tell the public to behave in certain ways, we cannot put that very public at risk on things that can be done through other more reasonable methods or means. That's certainly my position, I think, going forward. But I think we've heard from, I think, most or all the councilmembers in terms of their preference. We have about eight minutes left. Until then, let me first go to Chief Bennett and then if any other councilmember, I'll go through the line, wanted to talk for one minute in closing, we can do that. Chief Bennett, did you want to say anything else, sir?
Thank you, Chairman. John Bennett, Chief of Staff. The administration wants to, again, in that balancing act we've all talked about between public safety and administrative effort as well as protecting the public from the COVID risk, balanced against keeping the economy and the continuity of government going. I just want to talk through a calendar, which might be easier. We know today would have been a regular meeting. We know a week from today was scheduled for a CRA meeting and then next week after that, the 16th, was a regular meeting and then lastly, the 23rd, was a workshop. Depending on the wishes of counsel, we could push forward to a limited meeting and get the public comment necessary and meet on those things that were discussed. I think the big questions would be the balancing of a complete virtual meeting or having the quorum that Ms. Grimes talked about and then deciding on what level of public comment between the options we gave, which would be through the web, through voicemail, or through delivery of comments and exhibits to the clerk's office. Again, balancing the risk and the continuity of government with counsel in there. So we're looking forward to closing the meeting out with a recommendation. I understand counsel's not convened to take action today, but we're looking for a direction to decide how far you want to go as it relates to a regular meeting, specifically on the 16th. I know we have a CRA discussion coming up, so we'll work on it for now.
And thank you, Chief, and I'll run through the line, councilmembers, 45 seconds each, I'll just, and we'll go backwards, I guess, this time. Just my belief is, I think that if we can do limited meetings via virtual meeting, certainly we should aspire for that, so long as the technology is available, the staff is available for that, we should certainly aspire for that. And by the way, if the technology is not available for that, for these kind of issues that move our economy forward that we can do without violating public safety, then we ought to be able to contract out to get additional technological feasibility. If that is so, we shouldn't let that be an impediment if we can do that. And certainly during the time that we can do the limited meetings till, from now till then, we should continue to have weekly briefings done under the emergency hearings that I can presently as chair call or whoever would be chair in the future so that we can continue to discuss the changes that happens in the effect on counsel. My opinion. Councilman Miranda.
Mr. Chairman, I think we have to have some type of meetings to ensure that the economy is not also stagnated any further than what it already will be. And by doing that, without violating any rules and regulation that's set for by the mayor, the county, the state, or the country, that we meet somehow, whether it's virtually or in any other way, to continue to move that agenda. That agenda will stimulate the movement of the economy, not the people, but the movement of the economy, which right now is equally important as what we have now. And I will meet in any way, virtually or in person or by phone or however, and I appreciate everyone's comments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Meniscalco, one minute, sir. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Just, I agree with you, Chairman Vera, you know, meeting virtually in a limited capacity, whatever it is, but, you know, we're still moving forward, we're not at a complete standstill and we're maintaining the safety of everyone without completely stalling out. That's it.
Thank you, sir. I'm going backwards here. Councilman Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for the leadership again. I do agree with you on the point of we are a big city and whatever technological equipment we need to have to do what we do for the citizens and for the administration, we need to get and make sure we can get the message out and we can meet, like Councilman Miranda said, to make sure that we're keeping on the move. So I would do the recommendations made, but again, I believe we need to get the equipment we need to do, we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Goode. Councilman Dingfelter, sir, go ahead, one minute.
One minute, tough on me, Mr. Chair.
I'll give you two. I'll give you two, man. Let's go for it.
All right. I think in regard to the 16th standard meeting, again, reiterating what I said before, I don't think we're, like the second, we're in essential service and I think we can defer that meeting, allow the administration to, the mayor, to continue to make these contract decisions on a unilateral basis and with, obviously, without us looking over our shoulders and giving our input one-on-one through Mr. Bennett. Totally agree in regard to weekly briefings. I think we should continue. And I also think we should try and figure out a way for the public to be accessible to our weekly briefings with perhaps a two-minute call-in in advance. So in other words, figure out a way to have people leave voice messages to us and in advance of our weekly briefing session, we could have perhaps a half hour, an hour of listening to the two-minute calls and obviously the clerk can edit those as necessary, you know, if they're inappropriate. But generally speaking, allow the public to give us some input and to feel like they are participating to a certain extent. So maybe we can incorporate those into our weekly briefings in advance, kind of a hybrid of what Mr. Bennett was spoken to earlier. In regard to quasi-judicial, totally think that should be off the table for now. However, the feedback I just got from four different land use attorneys and professionals while we've been speaking, they've been texting me, is they said they need, their clients need some predictability and some certainty. And what they're suggesting is schedule definite meetings in June to carry over all of these pending meetings, schedule definite meetings in June, hopefully by then, we can get together in person and move forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Dingfelter. Councilman Citro, one minute, more or less. Go for it.
Mr. Chair, thank you very, very much. I'm ready to get back to work. However, we do understand that this is a crisis. I would like to see us move forward, whether it be with communication with the city or to get some sort of meetings put together, whether it be virtual or in person. I think Councilman Miranda came up with some perfectly good idea. Again, I would like to thank everybody involved for putting this together today, especially to you, Mr. Chair, for your leadership, your aide who has been exemplary in putting this together, the mayor, Chief Bennett, Ms. Grimes, of course, all the legal staff. I'm ready to get back to work. Let's make it happen as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Citro. And then lastly, Councilman Carlson, I'll give you two minutes. Go for it.
Thank you, everyone, again. I think we ought to do at least the basic meetings, the basic briefings, and it's not so much briefings just for us, but for the public. The public, certain members of the public have an expectation that they will learn and gather information through these meetings. It's another form of information for the public. And if we can give them any kind of way to give feedback, even if we're not voting on something, I think that would be good. You know, I've been watching online as we've been sitting here meeting, listening to all the different comments that people are making. One thing I would recommend is when we send out the announcement of this, I think we ought to put what the agenda is so that folks know and they can choose to log in or not. And then, as soon as possible, I think we need to get back to holding these land use meetings. I like the idea of meeting and setting it up in June or before enough out so that there's some certainty, but I want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to not only protect everyone's health, safety, but also get the economy moving. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Carlson. So what I'm reading, and I would agree with this, is three things. Number one, that we have weekly meetings with an agenda for the public and we can notice a hearing or a meeting for next week, that we have an aspiration to begin for June and that we try to begin the limited meetings prior to that if they can be done telephonically for things that are not quasi-judicial to help get the economy moving as we can. I would love to see limited meetings occur by late April if potentially possible, but certainly that's something that we can be briefed on. Councilmembers, this will be hard. Anyone have an objection to that in terms of taking your pulse, not a vote? Okay? None? Chief Bennett, is the administration in agreement with that, sir?
We are. The one opportunity I would offer is that if we're going to have the briefing meeting in addition to a limited meeting, we'd like to combine the briefing and the limited meeting together.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Of course. So, no, no objection and what the administration will do is set up a complete virtual environment, similar to what we're doing right now, and allow the decision to be made about the quorum based on what Ms. Grimes spoke about in between setting up, because we can always go to the physical aspect easier than the virtual. So we'll set up the virtual model and we'll set up the public comment model based on what we discussed. Even if it's just an emergency meeting, we'll set up a form of public comment. But if you, as counsel, believe through Mr. Shelby's discussions that you want to facilitate a quorum for those decisions you would now make in a limited meeting, we can accommodate that very easily and adapt from a complete virtual model.
Yes, and thank you for that, Chief. And in terms of a limited meeting, again, my vision for that is virtual, is doing it over the phone or via video conferencing, whatever may be available or readily accessible to the city otherwise so that we can get these important economic matters moving as soon as possible, they're not quasi-judicial. So... So, and I agree, which is if we have a limited meeting, that would, of course, make the briefing completely superfluous and we can combine them. So, we'll move forward from there and then, councilmembers, we'll have a meeting next week? Oh, yes, sir. Go for it.
I'm sorry, Dingfelder. I hear what you're saying. I'm not in disagreement, but I think that there seems to be a problem with what Ms. Grimes was trying to emphasize, is that with her, I'll speak for her, that her understanding is that, or her comfort level is that we can't vote unless we have a real quorum in person, unless the legislature meets and changes that statute. The concern is, the governor doesn't have the ability to do that or might not have the ability to do that. So, if we took any votes without actually being in person, then that creates a legal risk. So, then the question is, is it worth it for members to be there in a physical quorum? And I'm not really, you know, of course, I stated earlier, I don't think it really is. I think the mayor can do that without us right now in regard to the consent items. So, that's just my opinion.
Yes, sir. And I'm in agreement with that 100%. Let me be clear, right now, for the month of April, I do not support us meeting live under any capacity. I do not support that. And if this cannot be done via telephone or video conferencing otherwise, it's not something with the information I presently have that I'm prepared to move forward on. But I would like further study and discussion to have, to be held on that to the extent so feasible. So, that's my position there. Okay, everybody, thank you very much. We are adjourned.
Mr. Vera, this is Gina Grimes, City Attorney. I just want to clarify two things real quick. I agree with what Mr. Dingfelder said as far as going ahead and meeting entirely on a virtual basis. We can do that. I think what he said is accurate, that we need to do so, though, understanding the risk associated with that, because you are relying on the governor's executive order saying that he was waiving that aspect, the physical quorum requirement of the sunshine law. So, as long as all of you know and accept that risk, then I'm fine with moving forward. The second item I want clarification on and direction to give the certainty that you're seeking for the members of the bar on quasi-judicial matters. Are you saying that you want to set a meeting day in June to resume quasi-judicial hearings? And if so, are you, is what you're seeking to do, to do so when we can resume those meetings in the same manner that they're conducted, that they were conducted previously, meaning full physical presence, not virtual?
Yes, ma'am. That is what I read, council. That is my preference as well, if it can be done. Obviously, if we come into May and we're still in the same situation that we're at right now, we're going to have to reassess that based upon public health. But I think that is a good aspiration that would at least give us a goal. And that's what I also read my councilmembers saying as well, my colleagues and saying as well. And I would like more clarification. Not now, maybe we can talk offline in terms of what this risk is. I'd like to discuss that with regards to virtual meetings, et cetera. But we can discuss that offline, I guess, for the purposes of time. Anybody else from staff have anything else to say? Okay? Councilmembers, 10 seconds. Anybody else? Just in all fairness. Okay? Being none, we are adjourned. Thank everybody for your patience. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, to interrupt. This is, yes, this is Martin Shelby. It is 12:36. Could you see if the legal department has any guidance with regard to the public as to when the CRA meeting, which is supposed to follow this, will commence?
Yes.
And then you'll be able to tell the people online accordingly what time to be able to use the methods that apply to the CRA to access that teleconference.
Thank you, Mr. Shelby, for that. I appreciate it. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Boris Massey, Deputy City Attorney and the CRA Attorney. I think we were talking about a 15-minute segment where we would have to get things lined up again for the CRA meeting. I would suggest that we start the CRA meeting exactly at 1 o'clock because apparently I noticed it went out at 1 o'clock. So, in a sense of common, we're just starting at 1 o'clock on the dot.
Okay. Then we will rely upon that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Joseph Citro here, and I agree with the 1 o'clock time. I agree with that 1 o'clock time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Citro. Thank you, sir. Okay, everybody, we will then reconvene at 1 for CRA under Chairman Joe Citro. I appreciate everybody's patience today with, again, these very unorthodox methods of communication for these kind of issues and I appreciate it. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.